All right, can I call the meeting to order, please? For Monday, June 19th, 5:00 P. M. So we're an hour early. We're on the off Monday. So I hope we're still going to have some people keeping an eye on us in the public. So this is the meeting of the St. John, City of St. John Common Council meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order and we're going to start with a land acknowledgement. And I'm going to send that over to Councillor Norton for the land acknowledgement this evening. Councillor Norton, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. The land on which the city of St. John, where Mennequist is situated, is the traditional territory of the Wallista Week. The Wallista Week, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Meegma and Pesca Tomacotti, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources.
I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, City Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
The inaugural place brand for the region, always moving forward. So that was a significant milestone for the agency and for the region. So that was a thoughtful process that involved market research and understanding of what were the assets and the natural things that we should be leaning into as the St. John region. We've shared it with a number of stakeholders before we actually launched it with the Pride of Place campaign in the fall of 2022. So that was a big lift that's now being transitioned into other work, including some talent campaigns that I think have launched in May that some of you would have seen revealed at Powered by People, an event that we just held. And then Heather's going to talk about the next one.
So the regional growth dashboard 2.0, this was launched in December of 2022. I have a quote here from David Campbell, who's a nationally recognized economist. Envision St. John's new economic dashboard is an excellent example of a resource that will help stakeholders in the region identify in real time where progress is being made and shine a light on areas that need more work. I applaud the Envision St. John team for developing this tool. And it is, in fact, a tool. These are not metrics about the agency. These are metrics about the actual region. We've recently conducted some workshops with all the municipal staff who are invited to participate so that they can learn how to avail of this information to inform decision making, to inform presentations. And we also are encouraging, whether it be developers or other community stakeholders, to use this information to make data informed decisions and strategy. The categories include leisure, population growth, trade, real estate, tourism, and quality of life. And we've recently acquired additional data, um, data sets. And I want everyone to be thinking this is all regional data. You all have access and you can all make requests to us to access this additional detailed information.
And then the next one, this is where we're going to start talking about some of the work we've done to support partners in the region. You know, the announcement last year of the $27.2 million to support the infrastructure required for the integrated health initiative. The role for Envision St. John on that project was really helping to articulate the value proposition of the initiative, why it was important, and actually opening some doors and some relationship building for Dr. Petra Hoff, who is the VP of the St. John campus. And her quote's there, I won't read it. But so we played a number of roles in supporting, you know, getting this capital investment at the provincial and the federal level to actually allow that initiative to grow to its full potential. It's already operational now, but we're talking about attracting up to 500 students, researchers, and other academics. So we were happy to be playing a support role on that one.
Next is the Lycée Internationale Français des Provinces Atlantiques. They, they are a fascinating group of people who've identified St. John as the location for a new international school. And this is more than just a school. This is representing quite a bit for our entire, our city and our region. This is an economic development play for a community of our size to draw an institution like this with an international curriculum signals globally, not just regionally or provincially, nationally, globally, that we have a lot to offer. So we have, we overindex on global headquarters, et cetera. This is going to help attract the right talent that we need to fill our jobs. Cute anecdote, they were here during the Memorial Cup. They saw the vitality, what was happening in the community, and said, I want to be a part of that. Now, it, there's a lot of partners that were participated in this, specifically the city. Our role, we helped with the RFP around finding the location, helping with the design aspect as well as helping with the deal structure, as well as onboarding them into the community as getting all of their contacts, whether it be setting up a bank, to helping recruit families for their, uh, student lodging.
And the next one is no secret to this council. So, um, you know, Stephen DeBais had a vision of repurposing an old courthouse into play, to a playhouse. And certainly you've been supportive of that initiative. And we were able to help Stephen and his team, you know, articulate the importance of that project, uh, you know, from an economic talent, cultural, and tourism lens. When we talk about our 10-year outcomes of attracting, uh, population growth, increasing municipal tax base, and elevating our place brand, uh, certainly, uh, having a cultural district around that King Square aligned with Imperial Theater and the other work of the St. John Theater Company is really important, uh, as we try to meet those 10-year outcomes.
Next, I already alluded to the 2022 Memorial Cup. I'd like to pull curtain back a little bit. And our role in that was around convening the right people and accelerating to get that bid put forward and have a successful bid. And it's, in fact, the first time that, uh, and we've had many since, but it was the first time that the mayors and throughout the region wrote a joint letter to the province just, uh, demonstrating their support to help unlock their funds for this significant event to happen, the legacy event to happen for our city and region.
Again, and not a, not a secret to this council, Area 506 is now a signature festival across the province, celebration of the New Brunswick music, culture, and goods. Envision St. John and its predecessor, Discover St. John, has been one of the inaugural investors in the festival as it's grown and been able to evolve its brand and have a brand extension that's beyond just festivals now. They do have a second festival, the Bucks Car Music Festival, but everybody's now enjoying the waterfront container village. So this has been an, uh, an excellent investment. We've supported them through marketing, uh, product development, strategic advice, um, over the years. And we've actually piloted, um, a welcome center there in 2022 that we've expanded in partnership with Port St. John in 2023. So this is, uh, again, a success story coming out of our region that's really celebrated at the provincial level and just continues to grow.
Next is the Amplifying Port St. John. Last year, we participated in what we called the Workforce Partnership. That was the first of many partnerships. We have part 2.0 being kicked off later this month. And the first one was around, uh, talent and training because we know that they're going to be growing their workforce by almost 800 people. We need to prepare. There's a growth readiness component in that. But I want to talk a little bit around, uh, our role at the table. And I'll read the quote from Craig Estebrooks, the CEO of Port St. John. "The collective impact model at Envision St. John means we are no longer working in silos. They are galvanizing the right players locally, provincially, and federally. We have seen this at the port. We are working lockstep with Envision St. John." So we're working in partnership with them and with all the key stakeholders in the community because if we think about it, the port is the single greatest growth opportunity that we have. People say in our generation, it's not a platitude, it's, it's meaningful work. And how can we make sure that we can unlock the right money from the private sector and the public sector, and I don't mean the municipalities, so that we can be ready for the growth that's coming from this port? How can we actually, uh, take, uh, the most opportunity that we can and optimize this rather than just be grateful that it's happening? So we see ourselves as key stakeholders in galvanizing and accelerating that work on behalf of the entire region because there are many stakeholders who are really passionate about this, but we need to be aligned. And that's the work that we're helping to play in partnership with the port as well as with the, the city.
Uh, so I won't touch on the 10-year outcomes again because I've just mentioned them. But one of the things, um, became abundantly clear over the first couple of years of operation is, you know, people asking how we were doing as an agency. So, you know, through taking that feedback and listening to our investors and others in the community, we did develop, um, a balanced scorecard that we have four categories. It's around the attraction of people, uh, visitors, business, and investment. And so this would be a baseline for us to grow on in future years. So I'm not going to go into it in depth, but, um, because you have it in front of you, but you can see people. We have the objective, grow the working population. We have some indicators and targets related to this one, um, because those were set by Pedal, who does give us money to work that file. Um, we have visitors, business, and investment. And then we'll just jump to the last slide in the interest of time, and I'll hand that over to Heather.
So what's next? And so a lot of these things were obviously are well underway since we are in June of 2023. But, uh, just recently, Julian alluded to the fact that we had Powered by People. This was a launch of our talent strategy. We recognize that talent, there, it's not about jobs anymore, it's about filling the jobs that we have and making sure that we're getting and attracting the right people to fill the job so there's some, some harmonization. So we're targeting youth locally to think about staying here, and we're doing attraction. And later, we're going to be doing some retention. I mentioned, uh, we also have recently launched, uh, at the board this past week, but it's going to be going out directly with the CAOs, but it's a real estate development strategy. This is a, this is going to play into, um, attracting developers here as well as cultivating more development with our existing developers and working collaboration through the entire region. There is a lot of opportunity that we have, but also a lot of challenges. Um, part two of that will be, uh, working with the CAOs and then sharing, uh, individual councils and PACs. Doctor recruitment, also a very important priority for us. We, uh, we play in the entrepreneur space. We already are supporting entrepreneurs and helping start up businesses. Why aren't we doing this for family medicine? That is a gap that they have identified is that they're graduating and they don't know how to set up their practice. So we already do this. How can we apply that same skillset and apply it for the doctors so that they can hit the ground running when they, when they graduate? So we're working with Delmed and, um, the faculty of, um, as I mentioned, Delmet. We have the refreshed welcome centers, and I'll hand that over to Julian.
Yeah, I touched on that. Uh, you know, our, a new, uh, partnership with Port St. John on the shipping container village. And, uh, we're very excited to be in a full-time, year-round, uh, welcome center in the St. John City Market. And so thank you to the city staff that really helped put a facelift on that space. Um, so again, we're able to serve our visitors, our residents. We are training in a no wrong door policy. So if you are a new resident and have a question about where to live or how to start a business, uh, certainly we are offering navigation services, uh, to other members of our team. And then one thing on the, uh, visitor's side I'd like to talk about is we've launched an online visitor experience ambassador program for the first time. So we do do in-person training for those counselors that are working in the welcome centers, and we do it for some of our municipal partners within the region. But now if you have, um, an interest or your frontline staff, you can actually get certified through an online course. So in the first week, I think we had 21 people go through and get the online certification. And I don't have the updated number, but certainly this is an excellent way, uh, for yourself, for your staff, or people who you know might have an interest to get familiar with the region because we all are ambassadors for the region. I think that's it.
That's it. We, we've got a few more, but we're just going to leave, we're going to let it, we're going to leave it there.
Yes.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. That's, I will have a couple of questions for you, Councilor Harris, and then Councilor Sullivan.
Thanks. Just a quick question. How come some of the, um, comparators are 2019 and some of them are 21? Wouldn't 2019 be a better baseline for us to compare to?
Uh, on, on, on the visitor one in particular, or are you looking at?
I'm looking at, uh, visitors as 2019 by comparison, and then the other ones are all by 2021.
Yeah, so in 2019, that would be the last year without any COVID implications at all for visitation. So in 2020, uh, you know, visitation was stopped in 2021 and even in early 2022.
No, I'm more or less talking about the other items, so under people, under business.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering why we aren't using 2019 like that pre-COVID benchmark for us to measure against?
Yeah. Because we don't have the data from that.
You don't have the envision, you don't have the, the information from Enterprise St. John?
The exact data set points from those, uh, legacy agencies. So we have it for the, um, destination.
Okay. Uh, how, so with, but one of the things we've talked about around Growth Committee in here has been around development. Obviously, it's the hot button topic. Uh, you mentioned being growth ready. How many builders, contractors have we recruited to come set up Sop in St. John since you guys have established?
It's a great question. How many have we recruited? Um, we don't, we have quite a bit in the funnel. We've got one or two who were, who've had inquiries. But I think the question is less around who have we recruited, but what do we have to do to actually start recruiting them? Some of the work that we have is, we don't actually know what product we are selling. So we can't just say, come to St. John, we've got things. We actually have to have the land assembly and the property identified.
We've got 3,000 units under, that need to be built though, and most of them are multi-unit.
Absolutely, we do. But it, part of our challenge is that if you want to build in St. John, or if you want to build in somebody, someplace like Kitchener, Waterloo, it costs the same to build in both places, but in Kitchener, Waterloo, you can get twice as much for the same unit. So we have some challenges that we have to work through, and I think this is going to be part two of the, the real estate strategy that we are going to bring forward. We're going to first have the conversation in more detail with, uh, with, uh, Brent McGovern, and then we'll, we'll bring it forward because it's quite complex. Because I, I absolutely agree, we need to attract more external developers. And we have really aggressive targets of how many units we need to build. And it's going to be a collective, not just an Envision St. John opportunity, but everybody is going to have to figure out, whether it be the PACs, to counselors, to developers, to everybody is going to have to pull to make this happen.
So just a little unsolicited advice, you know, some of the things that we've talked about around this table, around Growth Committee, has been in headhunting those seconds in other places that aren't Kitchener and Waterloo, right? Places that are slow growth, more like the Sudbury's of the world, where you can go find somebody who probably wants to start up their own company. So we've had that conversation many times, and I've been having it with you guys since we started. And I'm just, the lag is real and the pressure is real from both, from a human's perspective as well as from a business perspective. And it is definitely holding us back, which is the growth readiness problem that we have because we're just not ready for that at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, thanks for the presentation. Um, I know Councilor Harris covered a couple of things. I see Councilor Killen, our Chair of Growth, is, is up next. So from a growth perspective, I think you'll, you'll get those focused X questions. I'm more of the money guy. But first, actually, before I ask my money question, thank you for your tagline at the very end of that presentation. We are all ambassadors for the region. I don't know how we blow that up and, and use that, but I've agreed with that. Everybody around this table, the, the presidents, we've all going to be pulling people into, into the region and talking about what we have that people, um, will want to come share. So thank you for that. In, in your metrics, and I know you had a lot to present, and you kind of flew through them, but I, I found your numbers are really good in that we have numbers and are tracking them. Um, and when it came to the business money, like I think of things like our tax base on the non-residential side last year grew 3% versus 10% other cities in the province of New Brunswick. And then when I look at your scorecard, it, it's talking about serving and the work we've done. It's not actual results. From my perspective, I'm tracking the 3% versus 10%. Now, is that something that you were looking at as well? And just because we're early on, we don't have the comparators to show? Because I, I would like to see that reflected, even if it, we don't have the comparators yet, so that we have that baseline. Because we're, we have a significant investment in the region. And, and so really, I'm looking at the straight-up money payback of if we're investing, we need to see that 3% needle move because right now residents are paying an extra 10%. And it makes it tough for us to balance, um, balance the, the tax rate with those two being so far apart. Could you comment on that, please?
Well, first of all, you are correct. This was our first, this is our, it's an iterative process. So we weren't even collecting some of this data at the outset. So we're missing things, for example, on the investment, like we're, we're actually now tracking what the business investment funnel value is and what, uh, development real estate funnel looks like for the region. Um, so we're starting to do a better job at trying to get at all of those, um, leading indicators, like the ones you've just listed, so that we can actually capture this. And who could our comparators even be? So, because that matters. We, we're not just going to compare to, you know, Toronto. Like, we have to compare to like things, so.
No, I, I agree. And that 3% versus 10 is, is like to like for us.
That's the work.
So, good, appreciated. So we'll, please keep us in the conversation around those numbers.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, Worship. Hello. Um, actually, it's funny, uh, I actually have a money question for them. So, uh, so how many paid private investments have you secured in the organization? I just, I'm seeing you do a lot of heavy lifting for folks like UMB, and I'm wondering if they are paying to play to get such a level of service that you're providing them?
So we're not expecting, uh, UMB to, to pay for our services, but I believe the return on investment in the community outweighs far what they would even be able to contribute to us. But we are able to secure additional funds above and beyond what the municipality and the province has already, uh, allotted to us. We are always looking for opportunities to expand, leverage our existing funds, uh, act as a banker, so we even get some administrative funds so that we can expand the purse that we are working with.
Yeah, I understand that you can do that with the, with the, with the government, but I know in the previous iteration, there were investments from private companies that invested in the organization itself. So is that happening?
In a different, in a different way, uh, Councilor Killen. So we're looking for opportunities to support some strategic opportunities, maybe around that particular private investor. So rather than asking, um, a private company to give us an X number of dollars on an annual basis, as we work on a variety of different files, if there's a file that, uh, you know, could have mutual benefit for the community and the private investor, we're looking for those opportunities. We are doing it on a, uh, small scale, I will say, on the tourism file. So if there is an attraction or an experience where we can help extend their reach or elevate their brand, we are, uh, doing joint investments with some of them. So I hope that helps answer.
So no. But like, I understand what you're saying, like where you, where you have some smaller miniature examples, but there's no big player, and I know, we all know who those are, um, that's invested in the organization?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Um, so I'm just, it says in your presentation that you've served 125 entrepreneurs. What does it mean that you serve them?
So there's, it contains a few metrics. One is we act as a navigator. So we are taking phone calls and we serve them around how they can navigate to finding access to funding, uh, programs that they can, we can push them towards. We've also supported, uh, the Impact Loan clients. We also are supporting, um, in some cases, it's even some of the, the development folks. But it's, it's all people who are looking to start up a business, and they're asking for questions. And we've always said we don't provide programs, but we are certainly a first stop for them to direct them. And if they also don't go where they want to go, they come back and we help redirect them. So we, we do spend quite a bit of time. We also, uh, we do local, but we also do, um, uh, investors and entrepreneurs who are from abroad, who are looking to choose St. John as a potential place to immigrate to. And this is a prerequisite for them is to get, uh, onboarded, and we provide some insights as to what it's like to set up a business here.
Okay. Heather, I'm just wondering, so, you know, I, if you can kind of give me an idea, if there's any projects that you've proactively approached, maybe business that you first started working with, that they've actually launched their businesses, is there any that you can actually directly relate your KPIs to getting the project finished?
Well, I don't think we're ever going to take full credit for beginning to end for any of the work that we're doing. Everything is always in partnership. So whether we're in partnership with Connection Works or, uh, partnership with our Impact Loan Committee, who, who are, we're working with. But we certainly help companies come to life. So whether it be through their Impact Loan or referring them into the help, get in the Business Immigration Entrepreneurship Program, we're assisting and helping on all of those files.
Well, I understand that there's lots of other, um, areas that they probably end up dipping into to be able to get going, but, um, it's really hard to understand your KPIs and your outcomes, whether or not you're actually getting things accomplished if you're not kind of measuring that start-to-finish projects. So whether or not you are still introducing them to opportunities, New Brunswick or whatever, um, I'm just, I'm kind of wondering, you know, is there anybody that you know from start to finish? Yes, we've helped open 20 businesses this year, or three development projects started with us and it's completed. Is there, is there anything like that that you've actually been able to measure?
We do have some data on that, and I can get back to you with what those look like. But we're not necessarily in the interest because some of the, the time, it's not as clean-cut as six months and you've got a business open and running. But we definitely do track, you know, how many businesses, how many businesses are opening? And, and they all have different levels of, of, uh, support.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Just one quick question. I know that you spend $1.1 million on salary. Do you still only have one person working on that Develop St. John file?
No, in the integrated model, uh, we are, you're probably thinking of Jeff Seer, who's certainly the lead. Uh, but we have just expanded the data team, um, this first quarter, second quarter. Jen joined the group. So there's certainly, uh, support there for Jeff. And in our integrated model, Heather, um, in particular, is very involved in the file. I come in and support where, where required. So it's not, uh, siloed by different, um, lanes like real estate versus tourism. We work across, um, in this model. So it's not just one person focused on, on those efforts.
I can kind of see that, but I, you know, I, I can't really make the link too much when it comes to tourism and development. Like, you'd need some people that would be specifically proactively looking for developers, so.
That's right. And so as I mentioned, we just launched our real estate strategy, and through strategy it will inform how you resource as well.
Thank you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Worship. Julian, Heather, thank you very much for coming in. I'm a part of the, uh, regional team. I sit with the mayors in the underlying areas. And, you know, the region has to have, uh, a full team, and Envision St. John is doing their part as our economic development agency. And I got to tell you, uh, the mayor ran on a slogan, like, I'm going to light this, uh, town on fire. Well, I think the town is on fire. I think the whole region is growing and doing very, very well. And you guys certainly are, uh, doing your part, uh, as always, moving forward. And, uh, I got to say, when I look at some of these, when I look at some of these statements, you know, from our, uh, from our, uh, people in the, you know, in the know, so to speak, you know, Dr. Petra Hoff and, and David Campbell and, and people like that, and Craig Estebrooks, you know, if you inspire them, if you get them on board and they're working with you and they have faith in you, guess what? I do too. So, so I want to thank you for coming in and explaining exactly what you do because there are a lot of, uh, misinformation. People don't really understand sometimes, and to clarify it once in a while, I think it's healthy. So I think you've done that here tonight. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel Hickey, over to you.
Uh, thanks very much, Worship, and thanks Heather and Jill as well for the presentation. Um, I guess I'll just try to tee up my question with, um, and specific to real estate. I guess, I, I think the way I'm feeling around this table is, like, we, we're, we're seeing projects come in through our, um, through our permitting process, and either whether or not they're coming to council or getting approved prior to that, with a lot of excitement built up around them, right? Whether it be, you know, 99 King Street Courthouse, Tin, building at Tin Can Beach and a few others. And once they get through our permitting process, we've got a lot of them that are just stuck in that next stage. And I under, like, there's obvious economic conditions that are leading to that. But I guess I just wonder, like, who, who is meant to be, like, who? Is it us? Is it you guys? Like, who is meant to be there removing their roadblocks, finding their hurdles, getting them over those hurdles, and making sure that we can, like, get shovels in the ground on this one? Like, I.
It's a great question. The answer is both of us. And clarity of, of accountability matters, but I can share with you that, uh, this past month, Jeff Seer on our team has done outreach to 40 developers who have projects in the community. Where are they at? How can we help get them over the line? And every one of the municipalities' planning committees, planning teams are aware that he was doing this. So we're looking, we're, we're, we have a, we've set up a community of practice where we meet with the planning and representative from the planning committees from each of the municipalities, um, one-on-one monthly, and then collectively, uh, quarterly, so that we can actually deal with individual projects when, within each municipality that could be stalled or complicated or complex. And we also take the phone call, too. So we are addressing that. We've, we are aware that there are some projects where you're thinking, why isn't this happening? And in some cases, we've had examples where they're saying, I only have the capacity to run one, and I have three projects that have been approved. That's why I can't run two and three. So, but how can we now unlock two and three to support them? So we're really trying to look at them. It's not a blanket approach. It's truly one-on-one. What do we need to do to help accelerate this work? And then concurrently, who else can we bring into the community to actually do some pieces? Because if there's some stalled pieces, if you're not going to do it, we're already having conversations around who can now take over this project? So it actually goes in the right hands. So it, it, so it's around the acceleration, but your question around who, it is a collective. It has to be.
Okay. And I guess, I guess it kind of leads to my next question too. You know, like, we've, we've got population targets set at 10,000 over the next few years. Regionally, they're 25,000. Like, those are significant and, and they're very ambitious. But from a growth readiness perspective, how are we, how are we assessing that need that's going to exist here? How are we accessing, how are we assessing that real estate development need, but also that commercial real estate development need as well? And I wonder if there's an avenue for the dashboard to reflect that as well.
So, great question and we're aligned in that work. We've recently engaged with a third party to do forecasting work around key activities that could influence how we could get to 25,000 and what are some of the key infrastructure pieces that need to happen, whether it be housing to, in some cases, it might have to be municipal infrastructure. But it's that information that we're going to then push back out to the municipalities to help you guys inform the work that you need to do to prioritize the projects. So if you're going to grow by this much and these are the, this is, this is the curve, this is what it's going to look like, we're, we have the forecasting and the, and the information to share that with you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's really important because like from our, from our perspective, any opportunity to increase that transparency from like a needs basis is really informs us around this.
That's right.
To be like, yeah, okay, we know where these projects are at. The community knows where these projects are at. We can count on them. We know that there is going to be space for 10,000 people because right now we've got a 1.7% vacancy rate. I know that thanks to your dashboard. But, but if we could have more depth on what that need is.
And what that mix needs to be.
Yeah, exactly.
So the mix of the housing is going to matter depending on the type of how we're growing and who we're growing by. So that's the kind of forecasting and that's that real estate strategy is all taking that in consideration so that what are incentives that need to be put in place, whether it be at the local to the provincial or what other programs do we need to unlock funds so that we can make it happen? Because if we all are aligned, it makes it an awful lot easier for us to unlock money.
Yeah. And I think that's important because from a capability perspective, I need to, I want to be able to come back to this table and hold people accountable for that, right? So I'm glad for that. Thank you.
Counselor, I'm holding you accountable for your time here. A couple of minutes over. Just joking. Counselor Lo, I'm going to you for next.
Correct. Hi. How much involvement do you have in mostly people come from outside to build here? And I'll give you an example or I'll give you some examples. Like people call somebody, they come here, they go through the PAC, they get approved, they're going to do wonderful things. Then they go to this council here and they get approved and they're going to do wonderful things. They go back to where they came from, never get a building permit. So back a couple of years ago, year ago, Jeff, who works for you, appeared on PAC, promoting, promoting, promoting. He's disappeared. I'm not saying that it's bad he disappeared. I kind of liked that he disappeared, right? Because he was involved in something that, that I thought staff should be more involved in. But so, geez, I, I can give you examples of just exactly what I said. And, and they're gone. Yet staff spends all kinds of time at PAC and they do. This council digs up information as much as they can and they go back. And, but sometimes they come back and they list a property for 1.6 million when he only got 800,000 in it. So you can sit in a different province and make $800,000 and never get off your chair. So how much involvement do you people have in these transient people that come and do this? And, and the other, no, I guess it's another part of the question that really bothers me. Do you follow through with these? Does anybody pick up the phone and say, why didn't you come back to Tin Can Beach? Why didn't you come back to this? Why didn't you come back to that? That's what I like to know.
So we're working with individual municipalities on individual circumstances. Like that case, we would absolutely be more than happy to make that phone call to follow up. And as I mentioned before, Jeff's already done it locally with 40 local developers and we're going to be expanding that. What do we have to do to keep moving these files? Whether it be a vacant piece of land, to a hole in the ground, to whatever they've got, how can we continue to keep these files moving? And what are the barriers and what do we have to do on a one-case-by-case basis? It is not a blanket solution.
So would you, I, this ain't complaining about Jeff. I'm not complaining at all.
We love Jeff.
Well, that's you. But the thing is that can we, can we call you when, when something happens like I just told you one? Like if I asked, can I call you about Tin Can Beach and ask where the guy disappeared to?
Well, I think the first point of contact is the, within your own planning department, your own group. So, you know, Jaclyn's here, I would have a conversation with Jaclyn. Jaclyn then triages it and engages us as required. Is that an accurate process, Jaclyn?
Yeah, we'll go over to, yeah, her mic's on there now. Thank you.
Anyway, I just cur, I mean, the difference was Jeff was there in the Locklomen Road and I haven't seen my PAC, I haven't seen him, we were Zooming then, I haven't seen my PAC since. Is there a different strategy there? You use it now with builders from outside?
Well, Jeff, the Commissioner Hamilton's going to answer that behind you.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Yes, Your Worship, through you to Counselor Lo. I just wanted to reinforce the comments made by Heather. We are working in lockstep with Envision on a variety of files, those in the pipeline as well as projects that have received approval by council. And has, as Heather has indicated, we do initiate those conversations and Envision is working actively on advocacy efforts, looking at sort of the root causes around some of the challenges that are being faced by investors at this point in time and, and helping us both through that outreach, but address some of those more systemic challenges. So that relationship is very strong and I just wanted to share that with members of council.
Thank you. Counselor Ogden, I'll go to you next.
Thank you. Just, I'd like to make just some comments, just some ideas you might want to think about. I know you talked about it's a team approach. Sometimes when I've organized things, I often know that somebody has to be accountable to the bottom of the day to say whether something happened or not. Not just fluff, but here's the numbers and it happened. And I'm more of a believer in champions, so that that champion is accountable for what was said. So I'd like to see, for instance, we met for our priorities and everything and we talked about post-secondary education. We didn't talk just about UNB and NBCC. Number of years ago, large number of business people and such said, we need a small MIT. It became a political issue, but it still makes a lot of sense for the industry that said St. John is far behind in post-secondary, probably 30% of most cities. And we haven't been doing a job. But I just looked at your numbers up there and I see they've dropped 94. We're going in the wrong direction there. So I think what you need is somebody, I don't know who it is, I thought it was going to be from Enterprise, from Envision St. John, to be the champion of post-secondary, not just the champion of UNB or NBCC, but for post-secondary numbers because we're about 8, 9,000 behind on the population that we have. Another one is tourism. I'm over at Falls View and Reversing Falls all the time cleaning. I see people come and go and sometimes I end up being the tour guide. We put a beautiful mural there and everything and our, I think, and my family was in the tourism industry. I think there should be some type of booth. I just had supper over there the other night and there's a little panel with a couple names on it. And I think there should be some way to sell St. John at Reversing Falls. I live on Douglas Avenue. I watch the buses go by every day and the people that walk and then they go down Chesley Drive. And there's a lot of tourists that go over there. Yet we don't have somebody, a person on point, and the QR codes don't work for this, on the point selling St. John. So that's another suggestion I would make, is to have somebody there. But the other one is population. I really don't know who we go to for population. When I ask people at City Hall, when I ask you people, it's, well, that person does this. There's no champion. And when you, and when I see our numbers compared to Moncton, Halifax, our projections are really, really low. There's 100 million people right now in the world looking for a place to live. So I think, and it's not just jobs driving them, it's a place of safety and security, like the Syrians and the Ukrainians. So I would like to see a champion of post-secondary, a champion of tourism and a champion of population. Somebody that we can pick up the phone and say, hey, what's going on? What can I do to help you? And that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor Redmond, I'm going back to you for round two. I'm going to ask my counselors now to please watch the time on their clocks because I'm going to get rolling on this. Three minutes each. Go for it.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one other question. So I'm, I'm going to just bring up what everybody else is bringing up is 99 King. And I'm just wondering what kind of levers or tools or supports that is, is Envision, does Envision have? And are they giving supports to Mr. Wilber?
Thank you. Over to you.
Yeah. He's a private businessman, so I'm reluctant to actually get into the details of his, his project, but we're here to support all developers. So you can rest assured that we are looking at that file.
Thank you.
I mean, I know that, for example, you had mentioned helping people get financing, but I think I'm kind of with Counselor Harris in the sense that I think that it's more about bringing labor in. It seems to be the challenge from what I'm hearing about from developers than, than finances. Is that what you're gathering from most, just overall? Most developers are talking about having a hard time getting labor? And I mean, this is, this is a big building, so it's different than something at a smaller scale.
It's, I'm, I'm not, I don't have the luxury of speaking. I don't think it's appropriate for me to speak about whatever his, his personal barriers or systemic barriers may be for getting that project done.
Yeah. The only way to know how to fix it is to know what the problem is though. So, thank you.
Right. I just, I just don't have the ability to, to share that at a public forum.
Yeah. No, I was just wondering in general. Thank you.
Counselor Harris, three minutes.
Yeah, it won't take that long, Your Worship. Are you guys aware of the three advocacy projects that we have with the province?
Yes.
On, on housing?
The housing.
And I'm just curious, so we have the request for vacant taxation, vacant lots, vacant buildings, as far as either registering or taxing them. We have increasing the, the speed at which we expropriate tax delinquent landlords' buildings. And we have community enhancement project that we're trying to work on as well. What is Envision's role in advocating with your partners at the province on getting those done? Because we've got the minister coming out with a housing plan on the June 30th and time is of the essence to make sure that's in front of her for consideration.
Well, currently, we are not doing anything to help advocate for your priorities. It's something that we would rather discuss with your leadership team around what role they need us or want us to play in that. We certainly have a role that we play around any kind of large regional advocacy. There could be lots of different topics, but we're not, we're never going to, to assume that we need to advocate for something on behalf of municipality without necessarily being pressed.
Sure. I mean, that's fair. You don't have to assume it. I mean, you want to hit, we all want to hit the 25,000 number. And just to jog your memory, you've got 50 buildings that are abandoned right now in the city that could generate hundreds of units and availability to which you need half as much complexity in construction to be able to achieve. Single stroke of the pen at the province, it's a big deal. It's low-hanging fruit. I think it's well worth your time, but I won't try and convince you of the next.
Counselor Killen, three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you, Your Worship. It's just quick. I think I'd love to know, to build on Paula's point, how you support developers?
Again, it is a joint effort. We do this in partnership. But, but I, it's really important that you understand that we are not doing this in isolation. We never want to talk about ourselves in a silo. It does a disservice to the work that we do and the, and the people that we're serving. So in partnership with our municipalities, we serve, excuse me, we serve developers, whether it be on a macro scale around attraction. So right now we're doing some land assembly work to under, to identify what are some of the opportunities for external or even local developers to start actually developing. So we're looking at it from a strategic perspective. On a individual case-by-case, as I mentioned before, we've done an outreach to local developers to understand how they're progressing with their projects and what we can do to assist, again, in partnership with our municipalities. But we're also there to, also as an intake, as developers are coming in and asking questions. They're asking, you know, what are the opportunities? What is the process? And we are also helping as a navigation in that.
So navigation, okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, team, that's it. That was a good 45 minutes of information. I thought you did a good job. I think you are doing a good job. And I just made a few little notes, you know, about growth ready. And I guess that's the confusing part of the role to a certain extent is what is growth ready? But I say like amplifying support, facilitating your talent campaigns, forecasting, the real estate development, the amalgamation of industrial lands, recruitment, welcome centers. So there's a, I know you have a lot going on. You're covering a big scope. And I, and I know that there's only so much you can do that when we have someone that does come and, you know, buys a piece of land and tells us they're going to do wonderful things and we agree with it and, which we should, you know, with zoning and then they don't do it. There's only so much any of us can do at that point in time, other than to continue to encourage them unless we get, you know, attacks on vacant lands, et cetera. So there's some things around them that may be through a backdoor. But I do appreciate you coming in tonight. Like I said, I thought you had, we had a lot of good information tonight and we'll hopefully see you again in the near future with some, another update. But I have to tell everyone, I did get, have an opportunity to see the, the new dashboard with the data. And that's pretty amazing. Jeff gave us a, a really great demonstration on that. So it's amazing how quickly it can pull up any data that you're looking for, which is very strategic if you're, when you start to make those decisions going forward. So that's a great tool for working with. So thanks so much, Heather and Jillian. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to receive and for information? Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Norton on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 10.1 on the agenda. And this is a presentation, it's an item that came from Finance Committee, Strategic Procurement Policy.
I'm going to pass this over to the Chair of your Finance Committee, Counselor Gary Sullivan.
Thank you, Your Worship, for counsel and for those who are following us online. Quite often, things that are coming out of finance have to do with our perform, I guess, aspect of the organization. What we have before us tonight is actually two pieces. It's perform and how we are going to be more efficient internally, but it also is going to move forward, the social procurement, how we interact with the public side of things. One would think, Counselor Ogden and I often speak about being entrepreneurial and being able to be nimble and move and make decisions. When you're dealing with the taxpayers' funds as a municipality, we fall under all sorts of provincial rules and guidelines when it comes to dealing with funds. So as, as much as we want to value organizations that have a social lens, that work is really tough. And I really want to thank two departments who really took this and ran with it. One was our own procurement department and headed up by Director Forgy, but also Chris Roberts, I know, did some heavy lifting on this, in partnership with the General Counsel's office. Because if, it is very hard to quantify and, and there aren't a lot of models out there. There are a few in order to be able to meet provincial guidelines around this. So this is quite an exciting project tonight that's before us, both to move the social procurement side forward and also to save our staff a ton of time so that they can work on the projects that we want them working on. Just to remind counsel, a little earlier tonight, we actually had on the St. John Common Council Agenda, the purchase of office supplies. As we, why? Because we have to, because our bylaws say that we have to. Tonight, we'll be voting on a bylaw that will officially move us so that Mr. Roberts won't have to write us a report that Ms. Forgy needs to review, that the City Clerk's office needs to review to get on the agenda. All that time is going to be saved by a manager being able to have the authority to do those things. So it is with great pride and excitement on behalf of the, sorry, my intro was so long you had to sit down. But with great pride and excitement that on behalf of the Finance Committee, I introduce Director Forgy to take us through the procurement policy modernization project.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor Sullivan, and good evening, everyone. I just want to, before I start, just quickly also note that Gabriel Fabi's here with us. He is our new internal audit and risk manager that we're so thrilled to have. So you'll start to see more things I was working on moving forward with the assistance from Gabriel. So you'll see more of them. I also want to thank Finance Committee because this presentation you're receiving tonight is a multiple of presentations they've received over several months combined into one for your information purposes. So I really appreciate the support we've gotten to date on this. We call it a project. It's a policy update, but it's a project because it's from 2011 and things change. Laws change and business needs and requirements and what the city expects. So there's been a lot of movement on this policy. So we'll quickly touch on what our new policy statement says, what, what our services looks like, the key changes, some exciting initiatives that we're taking on like social procurement, and then our next steps. So the city's procurement policy statement has changed to embed the ability to affect social environmental benefits in addition to the economic benefits we work to achieve. So we've always looked for best value, but it's just encompassing more in what best value means to the city. A quick look at our project team. As mentioned, we had a team that combined finance, the CFO and General Counsel. That was instrumental because there are key regulations we have to follow that you'll see on the coming sides. Within our actual supply chain management team, we actually just have a core team of four. So they are the team that supports all procurement for the city. It's a very strong, small team, over 80 years of experience on the team. You'll see they have designation requirements that they have to uphold in order to make sure we're staying in line with our responsibilities. These are the key regulations that we do abide by. The foundation of our policy is embedded on ensuring that we meet all these regulations.[1766.88] of our policy is embedded on ensuring that we meet all these regulations. It's really important as a municipality to stay on side. In the right side are some of the key significant changes to policy. I will touch briefly on each of them as quickly as I can today, some of which is also included with what you received this evening, along with the complete policy. And then the three items on the left is really the goals we are trying to meet throughout the process. We always kept in our mind, how do we remove red tape? How do we keep mitigating risks or make sure we are mitigating all risks and being more strategic in our process? So the first one I want to touch on is the procurement method. So this is really how do we go out and procure for items that we need? Our current policy is very conservative within the guidance that is provided, and we are looking to enhance it. So this is exactly what I'm talking about when I say procurement method is conservative. If you look in this blue column, this city policy column, what this is telling you is right now in our policy, which is the regulation requirements back in 2011, is that for if we are going to purchase something over 25,000, our policy says we should go open competitive bid. If you look at along the right side, you can see that we're required to if it's over 121,000 is our lowest limit. So also, when we're working on these legal considerations, this was one of the biggest kind of monumental, monumental changes for us, was increasing our new minimum thresholds within our policy. So now in the policy, you can see, we have a low-value procurement threshold is 15,000. So what that means is anything below that, the service area can procure on their own, like they have to still use the policy, obviously, in the procurement procedures manual, but they don't need the support of supply and chain management. And then anything above that is up to the discretion of the supply chain manager, up to the trade treaty thresholds. And then anything above that, of course, we have to follow all regulations that we have to abide by, and everyone must follow our procurement manual. So similar to what we read in other policies, this will allow the city to incur costs that balance with the benefit received and to not overburden unnecessarily in relation to procurement method and to pivot our attention to being more strategic. By reducing the red tape, it will aid us in accelerating the procurement cycle for acquisitions, resulting in a more nimble and responsive organization. And actually, in utilizing an open-advertised competitive bidding process, you actually introduce a level of risk to the organization that may be unnecessary, and this will allow us to ensure that we are managing risk appropriately. The next key change that I would say is significant for us was the spending authorities. So again, our limits were pretty low in what we were allowed to spend within the city, knowing that we already go through a budget approval process. So when we had our EMY operational audit performed, you can see in the lower column, it shows the recommendations they had. So as an example, the suggestion was that council approve all items over 500,000, and currently, within our policy, it's $75,000. This is the table that we're suggesting we put on our policy to implement for spending and approval authorities. When you review these changes in combination with our controls in place around the approved budgets and the budget analysis performed by operational areas, and then the additional layers when it reaches procurement and our accounts payable department, these are the thresholds we are recommending to increase to. Also, when you think about it, and this is something that's a concept that's kind of been ingrained for me, is that when you have more levels of approval, it dilutes it, because then, you know, the chain of command, people say, oh, that person's looking at, so I won't look as closely. And so you can actually dilute the process and then make it drag on longer as well. So reducing that, it kind of creates an accountability framework on the person approving. The next one is also in line with what we were talking about, but our bylaw. So this one is going to be a big change for us. So this is around the process of executing contracts. So all of the contracts currently go to common council for approval, and the mayor and common clerk sign them. When I say that, I mean all. So it could be a contract for $200. It could be a contract for $5,000. It's going to go to council. We have many purchases that would be similar in nature that wouldn't go because they have a purchase order, not a contract. So really, we're removing that red tape, and we'll see big changes in what's being sent to council on the consent agenda especially. So General Counsel has performed the work to identify how we can avoid going to council for all these contracts. The main item to note is that all contracts of the city must be sealed with the corporate seal and signed by the mayor and the clerk. Because of the current requirements in the Local Governance Act, the CAO cannot do this. There are other places outside of Brunswick where they do. We cannot do that here. But legally, the delegation of awarding the contract can be given to the CAO, and then the mayor and clerk can sign the contract in order to properly execute it. The policy now provides delegation of authority to the CAO. This means you will no longer receive reports on consent for contracts unless they are above the spending authority limits set out in the policy, and those are the ones I just provided to you. Something else that is important to acknowledge beyond the removal of red tape, which I believe is also a very interesting fact, is that when common council is involved in the administrative process of awarding contracts, there is a perceived political influence. We also learned that this will contribute to our focus on having more strategic practices when there are delays in decisions in awarding of contracts. It impacts the suppliers who have potentially bid, and may even impact the price due to delays. So as I mentioned, because of the way it's worded, you did see that part of the recommendation is the first and second reading of the bylaws. So this is essentially what this is speaking to. The next item we had on our, in our policy that is new to the team is annual procurement planning. So now is a very important time, more than ever. You see inflation, you see, you know, supply issues. So this helps the team look holistically over the organization, talk to one another, and see what are we planning to procure for, and go strategically in a more, you know, planned, forward-thinking process. So that's kind of a big initiative that'll be taken on by Chris Roberts. Ethical contact and conflicts of interest, policy section three. The city expects everyone to act with integrity and conduct business in an ethical manner. This information will assist staff especially. It'll guide us, it'll guide suppliers, common council, anyone else doing business with the city. Also included, you'll note there was a supplier code of conduct, so we'll start giving this out to suppliers as well. And really, this section will be applicable to anyone trying to do business with us. So another new area, supplier relations and supplier performance management. There is a protocol included as well that's going to help outline kind of what we're going to do in our procurement procedures manual for staff, how they're going to manage this. This, again, is a new area for the city. I think it's going to be great. It'll establish formal methods to evaluate supplier performance. And even within it, you'll note it ties to the regulation where we actually can disqualify a supplier. The key for us will be formally documenting deficiencies, including a process within our procurement procedures manual. And it should be a very impactful new addition to our policy. I won't go as much in detail on this one, but same idea, contract management. It's really about seeing the contract through from beginning to end, owning the life cycle of it. We have the protocol as well included for your, kind of just for your information purposes. So the CAO may choose to establish a procurement oversight committee, which is the POC. It has been included in the policy. It's important to note, as of to date, we aren't at this point in time planning on standing it up right away. We want to be conscientious that it's not creating more work. It's, the idea of the POC is a governance role so that we can look at, okay, what other areas can we kind of downmoat to a POC, and then they can report out to council. So we will be looking at that, but the idea is any reference to POC currently will be your CAO. Noncompliance with the policy may expose the city to the risk of supplier complaints, reputational damage, bid disputes, and legal challenges. In order to stay accountable to council, the following structure has been set up for reporting. As part of increasing spending authorities, we have included the requirement to include a list of procurements over 100,000 to be added to allow council to see on a summary report of these purchases. It is not new to the city to say words best value, and best value doesn't always mean best price. There are other factors to consider. We are proud to say that the city with Finance May's support sees social impact as an important value to the city. As such, the city is incorporating social value into the procurement practices. The basic idea that we are encompassing is that you can use the purchases you make to create a community benefit, buying more than just the product or service at hand. So Section 7 is a new section in our policy that kind of defines what social procurement means to us. It has the protocol process that we have to follow. We had assistance from Larry Bergwin, who was recommended to us through Bysocial. At that time, he helped our team get training on what social procurement could mean. He also provided us with examples and reviewed some of the information we were looking at. When we continued on our path, updating the entire policy, we saw the need to also have a legal consultant, third party, help us. Mr. Emanuel provided us with a review of our policy, and he did assist us on key updates as well, some of the great ideas around POC and then the updates on the social procurement. So it was important to the city to manage our risk, knowing that it is very important for us to move forward in social procurement area, but it is very new to Canada, and as such, we want to make sure we mitigate our risks. So this just shows you how it looks in the policy. This shows the work we've done to date on social procurement. And then, we also conducted vendor open house sessions, and we thought that was really important, too, because it can't be a community benefit without community involvement. We can only do so much. If you don't sign up, it won't work out for us. So it was really important to understand what was important to the community. We had a great turnout, 25 vendors in attendance. This just shows you some of the return on investment that you can receive. This a reminder of the constraints for us at the city. And then, this is what we are currently going for with, which is our social value supplier roster. So it's going to be a questionnaire. We're going to give out to as many people as possible. We want as many people that can to sign up for it. And the idea is that we are going to have invitational bidding of three, if there's three or more on the roster, and we're basically going to the roster first for anything below our regulation limits. So then, we're very much excited to move on and start implementing. We've been working on this for a long time. We're ready to get it going. We're looking, you'll see the recommendation further on in the presentation. And then, once we do have an approved policy, we're going to get the questionnaires out there, and we won't implement the social piece until September, because I want to make sure I get as many people as possible on the roster. Procurement procedures manual is just really around supporting staff and how to follow the policy. I'm just going to move quickly here. Engagement with staff, so we'll work on that through the summer. And then, you see the recommendation before you now, but happy to take any questions. Not sure how much time we have, but thank you so much for the time, and I'll have Chris come up, too, as well, if anyone has questions.
All right, thank you. Back to you, Counselor Sullivan, to read us the recommendation.
Sure, thanks, Your Worship. There's two real parts to the recommendation. One is one and three that are in your kit, and then we'll have to do the first and second reading separate led by our City Clerk. So I'll move recommendations one and three that are in your kit right now.
Okay, all right. So I do have a question, a couple of questions. Counselor Ogden is up first.
All right, just a couple of comments. I just want to thank Counselor Sullivan and Director Forgy and Chris and your staff for just, this is just marvelous. This is just a wonderful idea. And I got a good lesson on international, provincial, and national trade implications, regulations from CFO Fudge about how that affects some things I never thought about. So I got a good lesson in that from him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, over to you.
I just wanted to thank you guys as well, just for moving so fast on this. When I brought up, when I was first, we had orientation, and I was bringing up this idea of social procurement. I know it had been talked about, but with specifically through the lens of the Preston model. To see this localized kind of priority on there is going to do a lot for the social enterprises in the city. It's going to help with our economic development groups to be able to laser focus in on what industries we could home-grow here, to be able to deliver services to the city and keep that dollar circulating in our economy. And then, just a high level, I mean, this is not the Preston model, so I certainly want a precursor, not exactly the same. But a lot of the principles here are pulled from it. And what they found there was there was hundreds of millions of dollars of leakage that left their city and never came back, just because they didn't have something pointing in this direction to say, we want this. So I think, we don't know the numbers here in St. John, but without this in place, we're kind of doomed to continue down that same path. So this is a huge, huge improvement, and it happened quite fast. Like when you guys were starting to do these vendor, these vendor interviews, I had almost forgotten that you were working on it. I didn't know that it was, had moved so rapidly. So anyway, thanks to the team for pushing it, and I'm stoked that we're here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Words of encouragement for me as well. We've certainly been working on this one for a while at Finance. And from a social procurement perspective, I've been working on this one for a couple of councils now. It's been, it's been really powerful to see this come. And I think it really, specifically to the social procurement, shapes expectations, I think, on what it means to be an employer in the city and what it means to be a responsible one in the city. And I think that's really important. And beyond that, you know, I think it operates on a pretty simple premise, you know, which I would suggest is, you know, you should be able to use the roads you're working on, right? Let's make sure we're paying people appropriately. Let's make sure we're hiring good companies to do so. And I think it makes our community a heck of a lot better. And from, and from a larger perspective, this whole procurement policy cuts a heck of a lot of red tape in City Hall. It makes it really easy and streamlined for our processes to operate. And I think that's what is celebrated throughout this. So congratulations, Sullivan.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to say that my favorite part of this is on page 96 in the kit, and its heading is Supplier Performance Evaluation Protocol. I love that, because that's super important for us as well, to make sure we're getting good value for the taxpayer dollar, and that our suppliers will be, you know, graded, et cetera, so we can always be spending in the right way. So I just want to say thank you. It's great work. I will say to the public, it's 100 pages almost in the kit. It's well worth a read. It's a lot of great work in there. It covers a lot of things. So I want to thank you, Jody, Chris, Gabriel. Welcome aboard, and thank you very much. It's great work, and it's a fantastic item in the kit tonight. So thanks so much. And that's it. I have no more questions from my team for you. So I'm going to call the question. I have a mover, oh, no, I'm going to get the, sorry, I got to get the clerk to give us the motions. We've got two motions.
There's one on the floor right now, Your Worship, which was a recommendation in the report. And then after that's voted on, there'd be two more motions for first and second reading.
So Counselor Sullivan's put the first motion on the floor. I've got a seconder, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next.
And next is a resolution for first reading.
Resolution for first reading. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
This is titled, "The Bylaw Respecting the Delegation of Authority to Award or Approve Contracts." Second reading?
Second reading, second reading. Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
"A Bylaw Respecting the Delegation of Authority to Award or Approve Contracts."
Excellent. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 13.1, Finance Committee Report with Respect to Event Ticket Policy for Mayor and Council.
Okay, we're sending this one over to Counselor Sullivan, Chair of Finance, again.
Thanks, Your Worship. Finance Committee, and I should give them a shout out, because Counselors Hickey, Radwin, yourself, Your Worship, and Counselor Norton do a lot of the heavy lifting, and then I get to read their work. But we touched all sorts of departments. We had procurement, we had the GCO, and this one comes courtesy of the leadership of the City Clerk. The events ticket policy was originally adopted by council in 2018 that would allow council members to purchase tickets and attend charitable and cultural events as representatives of council. At our recent Finance Committee meeting, our Finance Committee recommends that council approve the updated ticket policy as submitted. And the key point is that it will allocate an amount of $1,000 per council. an amount of $1,000 per councillor for ticket purchases as opposed to the current practice of the $10,000 ticket budget, which is shared amongst everybody. It'll remove the provision requiring council's approval for each ticket purchase request. Again, at the end of our council kits, we have a list of ticket requests that we have to deal with that would be eliminated, and we'll increase transparency by reporting the council's ticket expenditures in the city's annual report. The proposed changes would not increase the overall budget for mayor and council as council's current budget, an amount of $10,000, would simply be split among the nine councillors and deputy mayor. There's also a provision that, you know, should a single councillor go over that limit, but we're still within our budget, we can come back to council and still approve those ticket requests. So the recommendation that I will move is that common council approve the amended events ticket policy for mayor and council.
Take a seconder on that, on a deputy. On the question, we have, our city clerk is here to answer any questions on that. On the question? Question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next is item 13.2, Another Finance Committee Policy. This one's mayor and council professional development.
Over to you again, Counselor Sullivan, for the intro.
Thanks, Your Worship. This one's a bit of housekeeping. We have our professional development policy that council had approved. We did recognize at Finance Committee that really an oversight that we should have put in the original document, so this is hopefully to fix it. It didn't cover our two representatives that we appoint to FCM. You know, if FCM's in Halifax, great. If FCM's in Vancouver, it's tough to just to do that trip on the allocated budget. So what this does, every councillor still has their budget for professional learning and development, but it separates out and makes sure that the two councillors that we asked to represent as FCM, their expenses are covered, and then they can still do the other PL. So the Finance Committee recommends common council amend FAS 027, Mayor and Council Professional Development Policy.
Can I get a seconder on that? Counselor Ogden on the question. Counselor Radwan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify why I'm voting against this one. So this year, we had six of us at the FCM. Last year, there were four of us. We didn't have a professional development fund for each of us last year, but it's something that's in place this year. I don't believe that, you know, it's something we can discuss later, that we need to have two people appointed for FCM. They don't have voting rights. It's the executive directors of UMNB, Eight Cities, and the Francophone Association. The other thing is, is that there's no clear budget constraints on what they would get to spend, and since we have a professional development budget, I think there's no need for that extra piece. I agree with the rest of the, the way that the, but the policy was previously, but that's just why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see no other questions, so Kevin Fudge is here, your Commissioner of Finance, if you have any questions. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Radwan opposing. Motion carried. Thank you, counselors. Next item, city clerk.
The final item is another committee report from Finance Committee entitled Public Engagement 2024 General Fund Operating Budget.
Counselor Sullivan, back to you again.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'd like to thank council for having this Finance Committee meeting tonight. This final one from the Finance Committee, actually, it's a receive and file, but we really want to report back to council. And I really appreciate how our staff listen. You know, not everything has to happen because of a motion of council, and certainly we listened to your feedback in the last round of budgeting. So we talked about more public engagement, and this is one of those pieces that's in front of us, led by Controller Craig Levine. And the information is there on the rollout of our Shape Your Budget part of Shape Your City. There will also be focus groups, and there will also be paper versions of the questionnaire to go out to gather information and feedback from the public as we are starting into work on Budget 2024. And Craig is here to answer any questions should you have them, the motion is received and filed.
Take a seconder on it? The deputy on the question, Counselor Radwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I had this question come up after Finance. I'm just, I don't know if it's through you to CFO Fudge or Mr. Levine, I don't know who wants to take it, but I'm just wondering if there's going to be an opportunity for people to engage in this that is not online? Like maybe there might be something at customer service for people to do a survey?
Yes, through you to the counselor. We are going to have paper copies available at customer service, as well as one of the sessions will be by registration, so, you know, they can sign up and come to one of the sessions as well, so definitely.
That's great, and I just wanted to say, Mayor, this is fantastic. I think this is a great example of staff listening to council's feedback, and I know that was a big part of the budget process for me. I wanted to be able to hear for the extra bits of money, which we don't have a lot of, but what would the public want to see that money used for? Because we still need to manage operations, but anyway, this is great. So hats off to staff for that. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Craig. I don't see any other questions. I will say this is one of the more fun and engaging ones. The first question is, what are your top five spending priorities for the 2024 budget? And there's 17 options. Pick five, that's going to be impossible. So staff have listened to council, so now we need to follow through. Council will, it'll be incumbent upon us now to listen to the public when the public speaks. So this is going to be interesting. And your five lowest priorities, another seven, the same 17. So yeah, it's going to be interesting, very interesting. Okay, I see no more questions, so I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. Next item, city clerk.
That's the final item, Your Worship.
I'll take a motion to adjourn from Counselor Lowe. And I'll take one from some Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor? I just want to say before we depart, happy birthday again. Listen, we only get one day to really play this out for Counselor Lowe. We all know how much he hates it, so we thought we'd just keep saying it. So happy birthday from all of us again, Counselor. All right, we'll see you in a few minutes back here for the award ceremony.